Good evening and welcome to the October 18th, 2023, meeting of the Roseville City Council. We'll call the meeting to order and have the clerk read the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We'll start our roll call with Vice Mayor Bernasconi.
Here.
Councilmember Albert.
Here.
Councilmember Mendoza.
Here.
Councilmember Kuchi.
Here.
And Mayor Haldishell.
Here. Great. And this evening, this is quite an honor, I'd like to have Troop 916, the area code, come up here and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very nice. Thanks very much. All right, now I'm going to ask the clerk to read the meeting procedures.
Great, thank you very much. Good evening and welcome to the City of Roseville Regular City Council Meeting. Agendas are available at the end of the staff table to your right or online on the city's website. All comments from the public should be directed to the City Council and not to any staff member or people in the audience. All speakers must speak from the podium as this meeting is being recorded. For comments on non-agenda items, members of the public may address the City Council regarding any item that is not listed on the agenda and within the subject matter jurisdiction of our City Council. Public comments on non-agenda items will be limited to three minutes per speaker. The collective initial period for public comment is limited to 25 minutes. Any speaker that does not have the opportunity to speak during this segment, due to time limitations, will be able to speak at the end of the meeting prior to City Council comments. As a reminder, the Brown Act does prohibit our City Council from taking action, debating, or discussing items that are not listed on tonight's agenda. For comments on agendized items, speakers will have five minutes to provide input that should be relevant to the item appearing on the agenda. Time will be monitored, and once the red light blinks at the podium, we request that the speaker please conclude their comments. Lastly, if addressing the City Council tonight, please consider stating your name for the record. With that, welcome to the City of Roseville, and thank you for your civic participation tonight.
Great, thank you very much, Carmen. We're going to start off the evening with Presentations and a Proclamation for Domestic Violence Awareness Month. So, well Cheryl.
Good evening.
Good evening. How are you, Mr. Mayor?
I'm all right. Is it Marcel?
Yes, I'm Cheryl Marcel. I'm the new CEO of Placer, of Stand Up Placer here in Placer County. So, thank you for having us tonight.
Well, we're going to do the proclamation, and then you may say a few words.
Okay.
Whereas October is annually recognized as National Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and whereas although progress has been made towards preventing and ending domestic violence and providing support to survivors and their families, important work remains to be done. And whereas there is a need to provide education, awareness, and understanding of domestic violence and its causes, and whereas there is a need to support and amplify prevention programs and the community-based strategies to create healthy environments and decrease the likelihood of perpetuation, I don't know how to pronounce, yeah, perpetuation, thereby stopping domestic violence from occurring in the first place. And whereas California has the highest rate of domestic violence experienced by both men and women when compared to the national averages. And whereas domestic violence affects people of all genders, sexual orientation, ages, racial, ethnic, cultural, social, religious, and economic groups in the United States and here in California. And whereas children exposed to domestic violence can experience long-term consequences, including difficulty at school, substance abuse, behavioral problems in adolescents, and serious adult health problems. And whereas the City of Roseville recognizes the vital role that all Californians can play in preventing and one day ending domestic violence. Now, therefore, I, Bruce Haddishell, Mayor of the City of Roseville, California, on behalf of the City Council, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2023 as National Domestic Violence Awareness Month. We have a proclamation.
Thank you so much.
And I practiced that word perpetuate, and it didn't really come out.
Thank you so much.
There's some folks back here that really want to take a photograph. Yeah. All right. Thank you. If you want to say it.
Yeah, sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to, yeah, so, so as I mentioned, I'm Cheryl Marcel. I'm the CEO of Stand Up Placer. And here with me tonight are Jenna Louise and McKenna from our team at Stand Up Placer. October, as you just heard, is Domestic Violence Awareness Month. We all wear purple ribbons, so we'd like to pass out purple ribbons for you to wear the month of October in honor of our survivors. On average, we serve nearly 3,000 people in the county of Placer every year. And of that number, about 75% are domestic violence victims. So, we have advocates like McKenna, we have Jenna who's embedded in the jail, we have Team on Grants and Finance, and we have a variety of individuals that work on behalf of our clients. So, we're very delighted that, that we can be here tonight and, and support the work of Stand Up Placer. The other thing I've attached is my business card. I would say that my commercial for tonight is that we are seeking new board members for the Board of Directors. So, if you know people in the community that have a passion for our, our mission or want to be more involved in work of a nonprofit, then please refer them over to me. I would love to talk to them. And then lastly, we do have an event coming up on November 1st at Wood Creek. It's our fundraiser called Words and Wine. So, you'll be hearing from some of our survivors and celebrating their successes and also bringing again that spotlight to the, the mission that we, we do in this county on behalf of everybody. I think that's about it. I'm happy to answer any questions. Our team is here to answer any questions. I thank you for your attention on this important topic.
Yeah, and just, just for planning purposes for future years, the council meets on the 1st and the 3rd Wednesday of the month, and happens to be November 1st, happens to be the 1st Wednesday of the month.
Oh darn, that's very good to know. I will notate that.
For future planning, right?
I will do that. Certainly.
Or do it in the, do a luncheon, and maybe a stronger likelihood. I don't know if any of the council members have any comments they'd like to make? All right, well, we appreciate you bringing this important, important matter to our attention and creating awareness and, and providing the ribbon. So, thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Have a good evening. Thank you.
All right. We will now move on to item, Agenda Item 6, that's public comments on non-agenda items. This is a time, hang on a second, Nick, I see you. This is a time in which members of the public can provide comments on items that do not appear on our agenda. I do have a card from Nick Brooks. Nick, you want to come to the podium? Did I say Brooks? That's not, Bryant, Brooks, Bryant, B R. I got the first two letters of the last name right, so, sorry, Nick.
Well, I, I would like to look at Royal Park, the bathrooms.
Nick, stand straight up. We've got a great microphone, picks up sound everywhere.
I would like to look at maybe getting Roseville Police going over to Royal Park to check the bathrooms and, you know, all the riffraffing that's been happening lately in downtown Roseville, the train tracks, that we need to get, we need to get this cleaned up. We need to get downtown Roseville cleaned up, and we need to get Royal Park cleaned up. It's more safer. People play there. People use the bathroom in public bathrooms. And, and bathrooms are out here at the civic center, they're disgusting. I go inside, they're nasty. And, you know, the bathrooms need to be cleaned and here at the civic center and at Royal Park because they're probably disgusting. This is why I will not use the bathroom in public restrooms anymore. And also, another thing is that we need to get a bus stop at 2050 Blue Oaks Boulevard where Center of Roseville is at. There's no bus stop over there, and we need to look at adding a bus stop. The city needs to look at adding another bus stop over there. And I think that would be a good idea because that instead of me taking the dollar ride, I could, we can add the fix route over there. That would be a good idea because I take the bus a lot. So, you know, I like to, I travel. So, you know, I, I just think, you know, it would be a good idea to add a bus stop at 2050 Blue Oaks Boulevard. That'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you, Nick. Appreciate it. Sorry about your not pronouncing your last name correctly. Anyone else have agenda or public comments on items not on the agenda? Seeing none, I think we'll move on to the consent calendar. And Madam Clerk, would you read the procedure for consent calendar?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, all matters on the consent calendar are considered routine in nature and will be approved by one motion of the City Council. There will be no discussions on consent calendar items unless a member of the City Council staff or a member of the public wishes to pull an item for further discussion. At this time, we did have Item 7.8 requested to be pulled by council. However, no other staff member has made such a request. Is there any member of the audience that would like to pull an item for further discussion tonight? Okay, seeing none, Mr. Mayor. We do have for tonight's consideration, for our City Council to consider, we have Consent Calendar Items 7.1 to 7.7 and 7.9 to 7.23. At this time, may I please have a motion to approve the items as noted?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor with the second. We'll start our roll call with Vice Mayor Bernasconi.
Yes.
Councilmember Albert.
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza.
Yes.
Councilmember Kuchi.
Yes.
And Mayor Haldishell.
Yes. So, that takes us back to.
7.8, which is declaring weeds and rubbish a public nuisance. And I know this was requested by one of our councilmembers, so Councilmember Bernasconi, you have the floor.
All right. Thank you very much. I asked that we pull this item, which is Resolution Declaring Weeds and Rubbish a Public Nuisance on a Property That is Located at 1700 New Meadow Drive. And I just wanted to make sure that my colleagues are aware of what it is exactly that we're doing tonight, because this is the first time that I can remember us as a council taking this step. So, I live relatively close to this property, and so I would imagine that you might, my colleagues might not be aware of everything that's gone on back there. But dating back as far as I can remember, 2017, there have been at least six documented fires. Okay, thanks for that slide. So, sorry, I have a glare there. So, on, on this slide, you can see that there is one mobile home and a couple trailers to it. And the fires have been repeatedly back in this area. This last one is from August 5th, and it actually was extinguished and then actually started up the next day. You can see that it jumped over the creek. There's wildlife, there's open space back there. And I, I just, I want to make sure that this is all on our radar because, well, I, I still travel here every day, can still smell the smoke from it. Our quality of life really is defined by our trails and our open space. These trails are frequented really from dawn to dusk, from our families, runners, walkers. And that property there, for many years, has not been maintained. It's been out of compliance when it comes to the weeds. And you can see that this last fire burned up to the doorstep and to the trailers. So, not only does it create an unsafe environment for who lives there, but I would say, south of here is our homes along Long Meadow. So, my, you know, creating an unsafe environment, not abating these weeds, not in compliance, contributing to these fires. So, my concerns are around the safety of the neighbors, the trail users, concern for our open space and the wildlife that we have there, concern for the oak tree mitigation, which is just west of here, concern for the city resources that our fire and police have had to respond to repeatedly, which we all pay for. And one of the residents told me this week that their insurance agent actually brought it up about the potentially not being able to get property insurance. So, despite attempts to get this property into compliant years later, we're still talking about this. And then no effort or no noticeable effort by the property owner has been made. In fact, even after this fire on August, the weeds are still there at hip height. So, you know, this is one step in the process, unfortunately, that we have to, you know, keep running through because this leads, tonight leads us into the process for a public hearing, which we are going to have next month. So, that's why I pulled it. I feel like it's really important that we're aware of what's been happening along this trail, and I believe it's all been preventable. So, I'm, I'm in favor of this. I just wanted to make sure that we're all aware of it. I know that neighbors have reached out to our city manager, and I know that we take this action tonight. We have a public hearing at that time. The, this property owner have a chance to come and speak at that time. Okay, and then we'll be taking action then. So, I don't have anything further.
Counsel, have any questions or comments on this? Yeah, well, in my infamous bike ride that I've talked about many times, I drove, I rode past this place, and so I understand. And I don't, yeah, well, look, I've. In the, in the Agenda Item on November 1st, well, we have the actual outline of the APN. Is this all, you know, what's, what's the APN here versus what's city property?
Yes, Mayor. Tonight is really just calling for the public hearing. And then in the public hearing, we'll have a presentation, and we will outline that.
Great. Thanks very much. We'll open it up for public comment. If there's any public comment on this item. Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the council for, for action. That action would be to accept the report and move to.
So, let me read the, let me read the, the item. On Item 7.8, the City Council will consider adopting Resolution Number 23420, declaring that a public nuisance exists in connection with the existence of weeds, dirt, rubbish, and/or rank growths on certain property within the City of Roseville, and directing the fire chief or his designee to provide written notice. At this time, may I please have a motion to approve Item 7.8?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor with the second. We'll start our roll call with Vice Mayor Bernasconi.
Yes.
Councilmember Albert, Councilmember Mendoza.
Yes.
Councilmember Kuchi. And Mayor Haldishell.
Yes. Thanks very much. Thanks for bringing it to your attention. Now, we'll move on to, we'll move on to ordinances. And the first up is the California Board of State and Community Corrections Grant Award and Budget Adjustment. And, here we are. All right. Captain Simon, how are you this evening?
All right. Good evening, Mayor Haldishell and other members of council. Thanks for having us here this evening. My name is Josh Simon, and I'm the captain of our Investigative Services Division at the Roseville Police Department. And this is Brandon Fernandez, and he's the lieutenant of our Investigative Services Division. So, this evening, we'll be giving a brief presentation on the Organized Retail Theft Grant, some intended uses of the funds, and an overview of some statistical information as it relates to retail theft. So, with that being said, I'm going to turn it over to Lieutenant Fernandez for the presentation.
All right. Good evening, Mayor, and City Council Members. As Captain Simon said, I'm Lieutenant Fernandez. I'm in charge of an investigations unit. I'm going to give you a high-level overview of the retail theft grant that the Roseville Police Department has received. So, we'll start off basically with a snapshot of how retail crime looks here in Roseville. We have some numbers for you, beginning in May of 2020 through April of 2023 for different categories of crimes. As you can tell, those numbers began probably in the midst of COVID. So, some of those numbers in 2020 are drastically different than some of the numbers we're experiencing now. And so, we'll go through each of those categories. On the top left, you'll see a category of shoplifting. That's basically anytime a thief goes into one of our retail outlets and steals merchandise. So, obviously in 2020, that number was fairly low. As you can see, it's, it's increased steadily through 2021, 2022, and then up to 2023. We used April 2023 as a stopping point just because of when this grant needed to be submitted. So, those are the numbers you're seeing here tonight. So, on monthly average, between May of 2022 and April of 2023, we see about 70 instances of shoplifting in our city. And keep in mind, those are incidents of shoplifting that are reported to the Roseville Police Department. Those don't include incidents that are not reported from our retailers. The second statistical box down from that is theft from motor vehicles. So, this includes things like catalytic converters, which I'm sure you're aware of. Those are a popular item to be stolen and then resold on the black market. And those also include basically larceny from a motor vehicle. So, your personal belongings of a vehicle burglary, if you have your purse or something like that in a car. Those are where those numbers come from. Third box down is Estes robberies. Some people may not be familiar with that term. It's basically derived from a California Appeals Court case, which is basically your shopliftings that are turned into felony robberies when the suspect uses force or fear against a store employee, a security guard, a manager, something like that. So, as you see, those numbers have increased from 2020 all the way through 2023. The other two boxes, you'll see theft of motor vehicles. Those are actually motor vehicle thefts. And those numbers, as you can see, have actually gone down. And talking to one of our auto theft detectives today, actually, auto theft in Placer County has kind of morphed from your typical shaved key thefts to more of fraud and embezzlement and, and things like that. So, we've seen more fraud-type cases than actually theft of motor vehicle cases, but we want to include those numbers as well. And then that last box, it says cases with a 490.4 PC statute. And 490.4 is obviously the penal code for organized retail theft. That was introduced back in 2019. That code is extended through 2026. And those are basically any type of case that involves two or more parties acting in concert, whether it be to commit a theft or to receive stolen property or things like that. So, as you can see, those numbers aren't very large, but that section was fairly new back in 2020, and it's. numbers aren't very large, but that section was fairly new back in 2020, and it's steadily increased through 21 and 22 and 23. So there's a snapshot of, of retail crime in Roseville. So basically, what is the organized retail theft grant? And what are we going to do with it? So basically, the organized retail theft grant, it was established through Senate Bill 154 in 2022. The grant funds are administered by the Board of State Community Corrections, also known as the BSCC. So the goal of the grant funds is basically to support, support local law enforcement agencies in preventing and responding to three main types of theft: organized retail theft, motor vehicle or motor vehicle accessory theft, and then cargo theft. So during the grant period, the BSCC received 114 proposals for funding. They divided those proposals into two categories. One was large scope projects. Large scope projects, those were funding in the millions of dollars. Our project fell in the medium scope project. So we were one of 26 agencies to be selected for funding on a medium scope project. The funding period begins, actually began on October 1st, and the funding period runs through the end of 2026. And then there's a six month period in which we do our final data collection, evaluation, and reporting back to the BSCC. So what are we going to do with the grant? We're going to, we're basically going to purchase investigative tools and conduct additional enforcement activities. And this is all going to be without impacting any general fund monies. So some of the software we're proposing to purchase is going to include some open source facial recognition software, some intelligence crime mapping software, and then some mobile device analytic and forensic software. Some hardware purchases are going to include additional FLOC license plate readers. We have about 24 in the city right now with this grant. We're planning to double that number. We're also going to purchase a bait vehicle. We had a bait vehicle program years ago. We're looking to reinstitute that along with some GPS trackers. And then finally, personnel expenditures. We're going to introduce some extra holiday enforcement, and then additional enforcement activities basically directed by whatever we're seeing in crime trends. So that's a general overview of what we're going to do with the money. So what we're asking from council tonight is basically to approve the acceptance of the grant from the California Board of State and Community Corrections for a total of $609,147. And then for the council to approve the budget adjustment of 647,960, basically moving the grant funding into the police department budget to include funding for a bait vehicle. And again, the grant funding and budget adjustment will have no net impact on the city's general fund. That concludes my presentation. If there's any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Council, have any questions?
No, it's very nice. It's very nice that we have this opportunity. And it's good to look at the crimes that are committed here in Roseville and how we can add this opportunity to make it even safer in Roseville. So it's good.
Councilman Albert?
Do we, are we hiring any additional staff to manage this? Or are we just going to absorb that on the management part of it?
So we're not hiring an additional staff. There is a budget line item for data collection evaluation, which will include staff hours to do that data evaluation. So we are including some funding for staff hours in relationship to the grant. But we did not include any additional positions, as those would have to be absorbed when the grant period is completed.
Sounds like a great program.
So we're one of 26 medium scope projects. What was the applicant pool? Do you know?
So this, this grant ran across the entire state of California. For the organized retail theft grant, it was specifically towards police departments and sheriff's departments. The large scope projects were your larger agencies like LAPD, Sacramento Sheriff, some of those agencies. There was also a, basically a vertical prosecution grant that was offered to district attorneys' offices. So the Placer County District Attorney applied for a separate grant and was awarded funding through that grant. So we're going to work in collaboration with them on these ORC type cases.
Great. There are no other questions. I'll open it to the public. Come forward.
You have to go.
John Freitas from Roseville. Just a, what do you define as retail? I'm just curious, what's defined as retail? And how do the retail establishments acquire this software investment?
Yeah. It's a good question. Okay. Go ahead.
So obviously, we have a number of retailers in our city. Galleria Mall hosting a number of them. We work closely with Target and Walmart and those organizations. So basically, anybody in our city that's selling merchandise would be probably a retailer, in my opinion. The grant wasn't specific towards providing retailers with software. But our objective here at the police department is to use that software in combination with working with our retail partners to help investigate crimes when they're committed in our city.
Any other public comment? Okay. I'll close public comment, bring back the council for any final comments. I'll say that I did go along on the retail theft task force ride along in December. It was kind of a boring night. So I guess evidently I did my job. But, you know, it is, you know, to see the coordinated effort, right, to see all the tools that we have in place is, is comforting. I know I have friends who work in the retail industry, and they are afraid, right? When there is not, when there is not an assurance that someone's there and looking out for their, for their safety. So great job with this. And I think we'll, we've got a motion to accept this, right?
Yes, thank you. So on item 8.1, the city council will consider adopting resolution number 23404, accepting the grant award from the United States Department of Homeland Security, and adopting ordinance number 6734, authorizing certain amendments to fiscal year 2023-24 budget, and declaring the ordinance to be immediately effective as an appropriation measure. At this time, may I please have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor with the second. We'll start a roll call with Vice Mayor Bernascony.
Yes.
Councilmember Albert.
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza.
Yes.
Councilmember Acucci.
Yes.
And Mayor Haldashell.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have a request, report, presentation, Roseville Soccer Complex, approval of the final construction documents. Always love it when they say final. And we have our Parks and Recreation Director Jill Geller and our Development Parks and Rec Manager Tara G.
That's correct. Good evening, Mayor Haldashell and members of the council. I am Jill Geller, your Parks, Recreation and Libraries Director. With me tonight is Tara G., your Park Planning and Development Manager. And we are here tonight to seek your approval for the final construction documents for the Roseville Soccer Complex. So I'll turn it over to Tara at this time.
Thanks, Jill. Good evening. As a reminder, the location is a 51 acre site in West Roseville off of Westbrook at Brookstone, adjacent to the wastewater treatment plant. The master plan was approved as a tent field artificially turfed, lighted complex, and that occurred in August of 2022. The complex also includes shade, picnic areas, parking, restroom, support buildings such as concessions, a tournament room, a staff room, and a large universally accessible playground. The complex is being constructed under a design assist process, which included a request for proposal with a plan set at 75% completion. The pre-construction services phase provided further collaboration between the city, the designer, the contractor, in order to achieve 100% plan set that is consistent with the approved guaranteed maximum price. Benefits of this approach provide for a method to control costs through minimizing change orders, budget analysis, and constructability review, and allows for the phasing of the construction work while other aspects of the project are being refined. This decreases delays and provides an earlier, earlier start for construction. Previous council approvals included a construction contract award in March of 2023 to Bothman Construction Incorporated, where the guaranteed maximum price was approved. Approval of the grading and infrastructure plans occurred in June of 2023. This approval allowed the project to break ground, as you know, and many of you were there, at the groundbreaking in early June. And this allowed us to keep the project moving forward. Today, we are seeking full construction document plan approval, which incorporates the grading and infrastructure plans previously approved. Our current focus in the construction phase is the underground work. If you've gone by there, you see 51 acres of dirt. So our, our infrastructure installation includes sewer, electrical, stormwater, and water. It is our hope that we can continue work on these critical elements for the project throughout the winter. However, if we receive the type of rains that we experienced last year, this work will slow down or may have to come to a halt. If we're able to make good progress, we hope to see the start of the turf fields in the spring of 2024. The installation of these fields will be a year long process with a focus on one field at a time, allowing for an efficient sequencing of work as the various trades will move from one field to the other, to the next. If we're able to work through this winter, the complex could be completed in late June 2025. I want to take this opportunity to thank staff for all of their hard work in getting us to this point. And this is not just Parks, Recreation and Libraries. Finance Department, Development Services specifically, or permitting departments, engineering and building, and of course, our park development team, all have provided their skills and expertise to keep this project on schedule. I will now turn it back to Jill.
Thanks, Tara. And before we close, I wanted to provide an update on our sponsorship efforts related to the soccer complex. Different from our traditional park naming process, we offered sponsorship opportunities for naming rights of the complex, the plazas, the universally accessible playground, the fields. And these opportunities were publicized via our website, via social media, through the Chamber of Commerce in the months of August and September. And we received a good number of organizations expressing interest in naming rights for these opportunities. So at this time, we're in the process of meeting with them, of having further discussions, and talking about the specifics of what those sponsorships might look like. We're hopeful to secure various sponsorships at various levels, because all of those dollars will help support the operations and maintenance of the complex. So we're very pleased with the progress on this exciting project. And tonight is just one more step forward for us, as we recommend your approval of the final construction document, documents for the Roseville Soccer Complex. And at this time, Tara and I will stand for any questions you have.
All right. Questions from the council. Councilman Albert?
I wanted to just verify, I was in a conversation, I have two months ago, and there was a comment about the universally accepted playground. I was under the impression that it might be a later possibility, but this has it included in the final construction. So I just wanted to verify. So final construction documents for the playground, parking lot, all that stuff that's listed is, that's what this is for? It covers all that?
That is correct. It's included in the entire package.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, I had two questions. One is, you mentioned about naming opportunities. How, how long is the naming opportunities? For a year or, you know, how do, how do, how do you do that?
It depends on the amenity. You know, if we should get a, a naming right sponsor for the entire complex, we would look at a minimum of five years for that and potentially up to 10, because they, there will be some investment on our part with their name on the monument sign and all of the promotional materials that we have. Field naming rights could be for just a year. The other ones, maybe the universally accessible playground, the plaza areas, again, where there will be more fixed signage for that, we would look for maybe a minimum of three year sponsor.
Okay, no, thank you. That was, I was just kind of wondering about that. I also was, remind me, for the tent soccer fields, are there seating in there or no seating?
There are no built in seating. However, there are, there is space for spectators to set up tents and lawn chairs.
Okay. Thank you.
Piggybacking on, I had the same question Pauline had, but I had an additional one. Do we have an entry level? Like, what's the low end and high end on the, on the pricing for the sponsorships? Do we, do we have something that is on our website? Because I went and looked a couple of months ago, I saw that there was opportunities, you know, for organizations and nonprofits to, you know, send in information to be considered. But I didn't see a price point. Have we established a price point?
We have established some price points that we're having discussions with those potential sponsors now. And those range from $6,000 per year to hundreds of thousands of dollars per year, depending upon the amenity that they might choose.
Thank you.
Scoreboards, are they included in one of those categories of naming rights? Or are they separate?
There are no scoreboards at the complex.
There are no scoreboards. We are in the modern technology world, right?
Scoreboards are rarely used at a soccer complex.
All right. Okay. The, the parking, parking lot, is that, is, does, how, is that a source of additional naming rights revenue? Or is that already included in the complex versus the field? Right?
Essentially, we've included that with the complex. We don't have specific naming rights for the parking lots at this time.
Okay, great.
Those wanting to sponsor a parking space?
High schoolers do.
Yeah. No, that's good. All right. I'll open it up for public comment. I'll close public comment. I'll bring back the council for any final questions or comments. Not seeing any, I'll ask for a motion.
Thank you. So on item 7.1, the city council will consider approving the final construction documents for the Roseville Soccer Complex. May I have a motion to approve, please? Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor with the second. We'll start a roll call with Vice Mayor Bernascony.
Yes.
Councilmember Albert.
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza.
Yes.
Councilmember Acucci.
Yes.
And Mayor Haldashell.
Thank you, and congratulations on getting to this point.
Thank you.
We've reached the point in the agenda where we'll have a second opportunity for public comment on items that weren't on the agenda. 916, here's your opportunity. Okay. Seeing no, no one. I'll ask the city manager if he has anything.
No further reports, Mayor.
And the city attorney?
For me, thank you.
All right, great. We'll start with Councilman Albert. I'll invite comments on, from the council members on their activity.
All right. A week ago Tuesday, I got to attend at the county courthouse, the first conviction in California of a murder because of fentanyl. And the victim was a 15 year old Roseville High School student. And it was a pretty emotional time. It was, it was a positive thing for the community in that we're finally able to really get the word out that we're not going to take this. For people that are selling this kind of stuff, it's very dangerous. And it was just a moving process. And those, those of us that are parents can relate to, we've had several deaths in the county from just accidents and first time use of something, not realizing it was laced with something that would kill you. Also got to participate, the Placer County Economic Development Board has produced several little workforce groups to focus on different things. We have one for the CHIPS Act. And I got to attend that a few weeks back. And then last week, I attended the workforce development subgroup. And this is just going to kind of go hand in hand with a lot of the workforce development that we're doing. We're trying to get people educated to step into jobs in our big companies that are looking for certain types of employees. And so the county board is going to start trying to be an asset to those groups. Had a lot of fun driving in the West Park High School homecoming parade before their big game Friday. And it was kind of fun hanging out with the kids. And many of us were at the, well, yeah, several of us here, we're at the
Oh, yes.
The Roseville Police Activities League, our pal Bacon and Brew Bash, Saturday night. And it seemed like a success. And then the last thing was, we had a community coffee Monday night out in the upper deck of Kitchen 747, which we appreciate them sponsoring the coffee that night. Had a total of 20 people up there. And it was, I think it was a good conversation, just a lot of open dialogue and questions. And I think that's, what we try to do as representatives is represent. And it's hard to do that unless we're actually talking to the community. So always enjoy doing those. That's all I got.
Vice Mayor Bernascony?
I don't have much, other than
Got a lot.
Well, I think you're very, but it for tonight, I will say, I believe that you are out of town tomorrow, because I'm pitch hitting for you at Roseville Leadership with our city manager.
Yeah, I have, I have a, I'm trying to, you know,
I know you've got a lot going on.
Two phones, right?
I believe I'm going to be filling in your shoes tomorrow morning.
Yeah, you're going to do that tomorrow, right? Because I'm going to be doing day job activities.
Yeah, this whole work council.
Yeah, work-life balance. Yeah, work-life balance imbalance.
And then later that day, I will be heading to Elk Grove to the new Skyhot Casino, because the SAC Asian Chamber is holding their internal study mission. They're going to be going to various cities, having a lunch there, and I will be one of the panelists, joining the Elk Grove mayor, and I believe a fulsome, either council member or mayor. So tomorrow will be a mix of council.
Your own work-life balance.
Yes, yes, so that's all for me tonight.
Okay, great. Councilmember Ricucci?
Do you want to skip Tracy? Oh, I don't
Usually come this way. You go.
Oh, you want to
Coming from the outside in.
Anything left, I'll leave you.
That's fine, didn't want to leave Tracy, huh? Just a couple things. I had the opportunity to go to the Northern California Power Association's annual conference, and this is on electricity. And they had many panelists from all over the United States, and they also had representatives from American Public Power. And so what you have there is kind of a sampling of kind of what's going on over the United States. We had many representatives from Roseville and, well, Roseville and the state of California talking about electricity. I mentioned American Public Power. One of our representatives for this region is our Electric Utility Director, Dan Beans. So that's an opportunity for us to have input at that level. But what was kind of good is how are we all reacting to managing the grid under uncertain times, you know? And that it isn't easy, and with the cost of supplies, inflation, and trying to get, making sure that we have how to send that electricity from one end to the other and do it successfully was a lot of discussion. They also had some breakout groups. They had one for legal issues, and then they had one on legislation and regulations here in California. So it was really pretty good. I also attended the Bacon and Brew, and that's for the Roseville Police Athletic League. And that funding goes for, primarily for children in Roseville. So that was real good to see people having fun for a really good purpose.
Councilmember Maldonza?
Just a few items. I want to echo Councilwoman Ricucci's comment, Bacon and Brew. I sit on that board, and from what I've heard, it was a huge success, and a good amount of money was raised for an absolutely worthwhile organization in our community. So thank you to our partners and sponsors in the community that made that such a great success, and to all of you who came out and enjoyed and indulged in bacon and all kinds of pork-flavored items. I'm sure that you got your money's worth, and look forward to seeing you all next year. This coming Saturday, they are doing the groundbreaking for the Apollo Dog Park, which is right down the street here. There's information about timing and the exact address on the Roseville Police Department's website, as well as on the city website. So I encourage you, if you're in the area, it's going to be a beautiful Saturday morning. Come on out and help us dedicate that park to a wonderful K-9 officer that has lost way too soon. And then lastly, the Placer County Local Area Formation Commissioner, LAFCO, met, and there were regional issues discussed, but nothing at this particular moment that I need to bring up concerning Roseville. But there may be some future items that we need to bring forth, but at this time, nothing to report out on, Mayor. And with that, I'll turn it back to you.
All right, great, thanks. Since our October 4th meeting, we've all been really busy. And a couple of things that I think we've all, I know, been at is the Growth Factory backyard, and our own economic development specialist, Wayne Wiley, was on that along with, along with other staff. That evening, Placer County Breast Cancer Foundation, Placer Breast, I can never get this right, Placer Breast Cancer Foundation honors, honored the Placer County Office of Education in Thunder Valley as their heroes. Friday, October 6th, was the Placer Valley Tourism 2023, and I think all of us were there. And I had the distinct honor of interviewing Roseville native and gold medalist Summer Sanders. It was a very inspiring day, with Warner Thomas from Sutter starting us off. Our city manager participated in a city manager panel that day, very informative day that day. Then, you know, not that the arm's that great, but threw out the first pitch at our employee's softball game on Saturday, October 7th, and then tasted the bitter defeat of the University of Maryland against the Ohio State Buckeyes. Our city manager's a fan of them. And then, that was work. That was not city. That was not city. Yeah, that was not city. Bacon and Brew, went to Bacon and Brew. Today, our Placer County Transportation Planning Agency met. We had, we had a preview, not a preview, we had a report on the polling results for a finance measure that might be on the ballot in 2024. So that was, that was very informative. What else, what else, what else? Yeah, I think, you know, tomorrow's SECOG. That's why I couldn't, you know, it's like, I've got SECOG, I've got SECOG, and then I've got a work thing at the same time. So, you know, Zoom can be beneficial, and then, then I've got a work thing in the afternoon. And then next week, Placer Business Alliance heads off for their meeting in Washington, DC at a historic time. I don't know if we'll have a speaker by then, but, you know, who knows? Then October 28th, Diwali is at the, the Indian Celebration of Light is at the, at the grounds. And finally, if council will indulge me, I wanted to share a message. I mentioned that October 5th and October 6th, we were pretty busy. The next day, Saturday, October 7th, began a period of significant global unrest. And as your mayor, I want to assure, reassure our community, its citizens, and businesses that the city of Roseville values include a respect for individuality and differences of opinion. You've entrusted your city leadership with the responsibility of ensuring a safe and healthy community. We've demonstrated our empathy and respect for all in the community in various ways. Our community has been a gathering place for community-led vigils when atrocities occur. The unimaginable horrific and barbaric militant attacks inflicted by the Hamas terrorists against innocent children and families living peacefully, enjoying their love of music in Israel, is an attack on humanity and the values Roseville holds dear. It cannot be tolerated or ignored. These murderous terrorist attacks against Israel must be condemned. I stand with Israel and its people. I know there will be those in the community who wish for a stronger statement, and I know those, there will be those in the community who thought no statement was necessary at all. But I thought that it was important to restate the values of the city of Roseville, and so I thank you for that opportunity to do that. And with that, we're going to be adjourned until November 1st. Is that correct? Thank you very much.
Thank you.